This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 8th, 2014, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 8th, 2014, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and right, your right and left respectively. I would ask that members of the public that wish to be heard, as well as those here on the dais, please speak into your microphones, and for anybody that may have a need, assistive listening devices are available. With that, Matt Hirsch, could I impose on you, or request that you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Borough Clerk Senior, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Minkoff?
Here.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson? Councilwoman Foster Dublin? Councilman Malay?
Here.
Councilman Potts?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Kovac?
Here.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held on October 1st, 2013, October 15th, 2013, November 12th, 2013, December 3rd, and 17, 2013, as distributed? So moved. Can I have that by acclamation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the motion is carried unanimously. Okay, do we have a Main Street minute this evening?
No.
Okay, council reports. Do we have any brief council reports? Councilman Potts?
Yes, just something real brief. I just want to mention that our next senior luncheon will be held on Valentine's Day, Friday, February 14th, and that'll be starting at 12 noon at the Senior Youth Center. And just something that's more generic for all of ages, the United Way is offering some free tax assistance for people who qualify. So if anyone's interested in finding out more information about that, contact the Senior Youth Center to find out what the guidelines are for people who might qualify for that program. It's being offered from now on Mondays and Wednesdays from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. through April 14th is the last date. So contact the Senior Youth Center if you think that might be something you might qualify for, if you're interested in finding out more about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolkowitz?
Thank you. I just want to mention a couple of things, please. This past January 20th, our Human Relations Commission held our annual Martin Luther King Celebration, and honored a dedicated resident who has spent her career in volunteerism to support issues in line with the life and work of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. And this year's humanitarian award went to Deborah Morgan. We honored her in front of a full house, and we'd like to thank her and her family, our other esteemed guests that attended, Congressman Frank Pallone, Assemblywoman Nancy Pinkin, Freeholder Ken Armwood, who was also our keynote speaker, Mayor Minkoff with his personal notes of honoring Deb Morgan.
Praise.
Praise. All of my fellow council members, Lieutenant Pannicello, our Community Service Department, our performers, Gerald Johnson, Lamar Hannah, LaDerrick Horn, Deacon James Jones, who did the invocation, artist Jonathan Horowitz, who did some beautiful original portraits that we will be displaying for the month of February in honor of National African-American Awareness Month. Black History Month, thank you. And thanks to Sheila Highsmith, Chairwoman of the Committee and the members of the Human Relations Commission. Our Universal Access Committee meets tomorrow evening, Thursday, February 6th, always the first Thursday of the month, at 7:30 p.m. across the hall in the Berman Conference Room. On the second Thursday of every month, Board of Health meets. The next meeting is February 13th at 7:00 p.m. in the lower level of Borough Hall. And this evening, in about half an hour, Matt Hirsch is having a meeting for the school's Communication Task Force. This is the third meeting of the task force, and to date, they brought about a breakfast meeting that the superintendent had with the parents of Irving School that was held last Friday. So thanks, Matt, for that, and keeping us posted on what happens in those meetings. And finally, tonight, we're going to be having the first reading of an ordinance to transfer property to Habitat for Humanity. Knowing Highland Park's commitment to lower-income residents and affordable housing, Habitat for Humanity approached me and asked if the Borough of Highland Park would be interested and able to donate a piece of property for a Habitat project. We looked into it, and we located a property. We worked with Habitat to redesign the layout to fit this odd-shaped lot. It's a great opportunity for the borough to address the needs of our residents, and for the community to come together in this volunteer project. Thanks to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for funding the entire building cost. We got a grant for about $133,500. And thanks to the governing body, thanks to Borough Administrator Kathy Kovac, Code Enforcement Officer Scott Luthman, and our Borough Attorney Ed Schmier. Thank you.
The police chief had no role in it? Fascinating. Surprising. Okay. Okay, I'd like to welcome back, without embarrassing Councilmember Beryl Mittler. This has been an exceedingly difficult stretch for her. So, as I mentioned during the agenda meeting, we offer our condolences and our heartfelt sympathy. Gail lost both her mother and her father within the past roughly month, and difficult enough to care for one, if not two, aging and ailing parents, but to lose both of them had to be absolutely devastating. So, the community grieved with you, and we're happy that you're back. We're certainly happy that you're feeling better, because unfortunately, Gail had to battle a couple of illnesses along the way, but she's here and smiling to the extent that she can, and we're just thrilled that you're back with us. So with that overly lengthy introduction, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. There is a resolution we will be voting on this evening, which will allow us to place two kiosks throughout the borough. One will be placed on the corner of South Third, and the other on Woodbridge Avenue near the Bank of America. The Communications Committee has worked very hard to make this happen. These kiosks will allow us to post flyers and information about events that are occurring. So whether or not our residents have electronic access to electronic data, and Facebook, and Nixle, et cetera, they will be able to get the information that is going out electronically, manually, at these two kiosks, in real time. Special thank you to Borough Administrator Kathy Kovac for making this happen so quickly, and thank you to the Communications Committee for staying on top of this. At the Reorganization Committee Council Meeting, I was a little preoccupied, so I neglected to mention two of the committees that fall under Economic Development. I just want to give you a quick update on what they've been doing. The Redevelopment Agency has been working very hard this last year in attracting more and more interest from developers in our redevelopment zone, and that's been very exciting and bodes well for our future. Our Highland Park Cable TV, HPTV Committee, has new members and new volunteers, and if you take a look at their schedule, you'll find that you can get some new programming in the ways of classical movies, classic movies, and many other topics. They're working on new programming going forward as well, and I want to thank Gary Leslie and his team for that. Main Street Highland Park has some very exciting programs coming up in the next few weeks. The first of which is called a Pop-Up Shop, in which I believe about 20 local businesses will be participating by selling some of their products in the Main Street office. This will run from Wednesday, February 12th, through Sunday, February 16th, and the address of the Main Street offices is 212 Raritan Avenue. Please come by and shop some merchandise from some local merchants. Additionally, there will be, right after the Pop-Up Shop, on Thursday, February 13th, Main Street will be hosting a wine tasting party. The wine is coming courtesy of Highland Park's own Pinot's Wine Shop, and a book signing party courtesy of Rutgers University Press and Highland Park author Mark Mappin. The wine tasting is from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the book signing is from 6:30 till 7:00 p.m. We're hoping that you'll all be able to go out and enjoy some of the wine, and certainly meet Mark Mappin and talk with him about his book regarding prohibition in New Jersey. Additionally, there will be, if you pass the Main Street office, you'll see a window full of merchandise. We are running our annual Win the Window program. Residents are encouraged to visit local businesses, and guess how much the value of the window is. Whoever comes closest to that will win the entire window. So thank you, Main Street, for all of your activity in the month of February. And on a personal note, as the mayor mentioned, my family went through a very difficult period throughout the month of January. And I want to thank my fellow council members, the mayor, so many of the residents that sent their good wishes and sympathy to us over the last month. Special thank you also to the First Aid Squad, especially Captain Andy Brown, and the Highland Park Police Department, especially Sergeant Gary Pannicello. It really, it really does take a village, not only to raise a child, but to take care of our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Malay?
Just a brief note, in our consent agenda, there is a resolution going out for bids for replacement of the water main on Montgomery Street. This is our problem child in our water system, and hopefully by replacing this, we'll be reducing the amount of repairs we'll be having to make, and providing much better and more consistent service to the north side and throughout the borough. So it's a, it's a good thing to finally get this started.
Thank you. Just to amplify and clarify that, so going out to bid means that we'll, in the very near future, we'll issue a bid specification. There will be a period under which prospective contractors can respond, then we'll have our professionals evaluate those bids. If there's a bid that's acceptable, they can make a recommendation to the council. The council can accept it, and then we can actually enter into a contract and begin work. So, there's light at the end of this water main, but it's not immediate, but it is sooner than later. Okay, that was your report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Borough Administrator Report?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention something. In the E newsletter that went out today, they listed the Environmental Center meeting that was going to be held in the Berman Conference Room. That was incorrect. It's going to be in the Environmental Center tomorrow night at 7:30.
7:30 or 8?
7:30 is what I was told.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning, Borough Hall, because of the weather, will not be opening until 10 a.m. I just wanted to make sure we got the word out to everyone. Also, this week was supposed to be bulk trash pickup. Because of the weather and the public works being preoccupied trying to clear the roads, we have changed, we have rescheduled this month's bulk pickup to March 5th for the north side and the triangle, and March 6th for the south side, and the April pickup will be as scheduled. Also, please note, in this weather, everyone should really drive carefully and walk carefully, clear your sidewalks. However, if we lose, if anyone loses power, please call PSENG. If you need a warming center, we have arranged with the Reform Church, but we please ask that you call the police non-emergency number at 732-572-3800, and they will help you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Borough Attorneys Report?
A no report, Mr. Mayor.
Gary Heson, do you think you'll be able to get tonight's meeting up on the website, just so we can get that additional message from the administrator? Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so I'm going to just give a very brief, I don't even want to call it a report, just a few brief remarks. First of all, I would like to compliment the Police Department and Department of Public Works in particular. January has been a most interesting set of challenges for us, most of which are not of our own making. In fact, I don't think any of them were of our own making. So, and I would be remiss if I didn't compliment Councilmember Beryl Mittler and Matt Hirsch, who chairs our Communications Committee, is our council liaison and is our volunteer, and they literally have been working overtime to try to keep the public informed related to the issues of the water main. And as I had put a letter on the website back around New Year's Day, if you saw it, that we recognized this is a problem last year. We weren't ignoring it. We agreed that there was an infrastructure upgrade that was indicated. Unfortunately, we don't get to do these things immediately, both for legal and practical reasons, and as you just heard, that process is moving forward and should be resolved shortly. So to the extent that that's an infrastructure problem that's within our control, we're addressing it, and that should go away soon. Not soon enough for my liking, but sooner than if we had ignored the problem altogether. So I'm happy that that's going to be dealt with. As far as the recurrent power outages, well, you know, I sent enough messages around, so I'm going to let those messages speak for themselves. If you didn't see them, I don't know that you missed anything, but that's not really the point. The point is that we are doing our best to keep everybody apprised, as we have learned from PSENG, what is going on. We have had a follow-up meeting with our representative from PSENG, and on February 18th, PSENG will be the focus of our council meeting. So if there's anybody in the audience, or anybody that's watching at home, that has questions related to what happened in January, related to the substation fire in Edison, and the subsequent repeated power outages that we experienced, we've certainly made our feelings known as a governing body. We certainly encourage members of the public that have concerns to come out and speak to them. PSENG has told us that they plan to have representatives here to address issues related to the outages themselves, that is, from an operations standpoint, how they communicate with us governmentally, how they communicate with the public, as well as issues related to customer service. Certainly, we as a governing body are very disenchanted and very disappointed, have communicated this both to PSENG, as well as to our legislators and regulators, that it's unacceptable to us to learn that people who were justifiably frightened and anxious in near polar temperatures, in certainly the most adverse weather conditions, snow, sleet, rain, and ice, found themselves in the dark for extended periods of time, fearful for when the power might return, and were greeted by a hang-up, or a dismissive customer service representative, or just an extended period of time on hold. We don't understand how or why that happens. We've explained that to PSENG, and we've told them that it's not acceptable. We certainly don't mind if people, and encourage people that experience this firsthand, come and tell us what transpired. I think it's important for PSENG to hear that firsthand. And what we've done is, we've kind of restructured our agenda for the February 18th meeting, so that we can allow people to really say what needs to be said. So however long that public comment period will take, it will take. Those of you that have been to other public meetings know that I'm not afraid to let public comment go beyond the 15 minimum minutes, if necessary and appropriate, and I think in this instance, it certainly would be appropriate. In addition to that initial meeting that we had with PSENG, there will be a follow-up meeting that I plan to attend, which is in the process of being coordinated by Senator Pete Barnes's office, and that will include some senior representatives of PSENG. I would assume that, and I've requested that at least one person representing the Board of Public Utilities, the regulator, be present at that meeting, and I, the mayor of Edison may be there as well, since they were also affected by this spate of outages, and I think that should be a most interesting and candid exchange. And I certainly plan to share my thoughts with them, some of which you've read, some of which you haven't read, because I haven't published them yet. And the essence of that is that I think PSENG candidly, while they do a good job in general keeping the power on, that when these complicated systems fail in these unanticipated ways, clearly there's much work to be done in terms of how power gets restored, how that gets communicated to the public, and the obvious disconnects, if you will, between their internal systems and processes, and how that is visible and negatively and adversely affects members of the public, notably their customers. It's unfortunate at best, frightening at worst, and potentially, potentially very serious in the worst possible scenarios. And unfortunately, I got in that vein. I did get an email today from PSENG, and I believe that they were all over the news with this. Certainly, I know they tried to get this out to their customer base, that while they have all hands on deck for the coming ice storm overnight tonight, that there may be, given the already, what's the word I'm looking for, the already intense weather that we've experienced, that there's already snow sitting on power lines and trees, that in additional weather, it's quarter inch, half of inch, or whatever, of ice, plus some additional snow in various parts of the state, may, may create interruptions in service, which means that we may experience power outages. Hopefully, we won't. We've done everything we could possibly do to do what we can, but, you know, it's, this is beyond our control. So, we certainly will do everything we can to keep you informed. We certainly communicate regularly with PSENG to let them know what concerns we have, where we see outages, where we have issues that they may or may not be aware of. We obviously will do that, and please be assured that whether you need warming, I know that there was a conversation today amongst the various first responders, and the Borough Administrator, and the OEM folks, to make sure that we are staffed and resourced as best we possibly can to respond to whatever eventualities may occur. So I believe that's so much for a brief report, but I think it was important that that be said. Don't you agree, Chief? I thought, thank you. Okay, did you have anything you wanted to add? Seriously, for just a change. Is there anything I didn't say about? Oh, let me just say one thing before I ask you if you want to add anything. Just to put this in perspective, we had nine power outages in the month of January. Some for just a few minutes, some for quite a few hours, obviously the longest one initially, which was for the better part of 24, or close to 30 hours, I would say, from start to finish. I am not aware of anything other than perhaps a misdemeanor crime at most during any of those outages. I'm not aware of any serious injury, you know, loss of life, limb, or property during that period of time. That speaks not just to the police, although to the outstanding job that Chief Frisco, you and your staff, you and your officers did during that time, and do each and every day for us, but also obviously to the fire department and first aid as well. So, and in the midst of all that, to have the public works crews out without lights in some cases on the street, clearing 11 inches of snow, people may or may not believe it, but this borough, and I don't mean me, but this governing body, and our professionals, and our staff, from whatever the lowest-ranked, if you will, employee is, right on up through the mayor, are working overtime, and then some, to make sure that we do everything we can to be of service to our residents. Okay, so I'm off my soapbox. Chief, was there something of import from a public safety perspective that I overlooked that you wanted to mention?
Anything, Mayor, I would like to remind the residents that park on the snow streets to please remove their cars. We try not to tow vehicles, but sometimes we have no choice when the plows can't get through. So, with the, whether the way it's been, if they could find other parking until the road's a plow, we appreciate it.
Thank you. I also would, I would just take a moment to remind people that, you know, we have an ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, about the timing, but it's six hours, six daylight hours after the snow ends, commercial properties are supposed to have their sidewalks cleared of snow and ice, and 12 daylight hours after snow ends, residences are supposed to have their properties cleared of snow and ice, their sidewalks. Now, the reason I mention that is I got a complaint from a resident today that said that on Saturday, as she was walking in various parts around town, she couldn't help but notice that she was forced into the street because of a number of impassable sidewalks. So, that's not a criticism. Most people are very vigilant about this, and we thank you. If you're not vigilant about it, and you don't have the means to do so, we have, who has the list, Kathy?
Andrea.
Andrea Day, and the Department of Community Services, has a list of high school students, primarily, that are willing to either volunteer, or in some cases, be paid. I think that's on a private transaction basis, but there are people who can shovel snow for you if you don't have the ability to get it done, and do need to get your walk, driveway, sidewalks cleared. So please be mindful of that, and it's really in everybody's best interest, starting with the resident themselves. You know, I understand that there, you know, it may not be possible, but please make arrangements, and if you can't make arrangements, we may have some ways that we can facilitate that for you. Okay, that was my report, and I'm going to open the floor for public discussion. Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard? Okay, then I'm going to ask the deputy clerk to report on the introduction of an ordinance authorizing the borough to convey a lot to Habitat for Humanity for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
An ordinance entitled, an ordinance, I'm sorry. An ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Borough of Highland Park to convey to Habitat for Humanity, Block 61, Lot 25, as shown on the Borough of Highland Park tax map, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, has been introduced in writing by council as a whole for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
And advertise.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to call the public's attention to something which I think is noteworthy to, I just want to say something to underscore what Councilmember Wolkowitz said before, and I promise not to do this for every item on the agenda, but I think this is especially notable. The third statement, I'm sorry, the second statement in the borough's mission statement says, "The Borough Council is committed to creating a thriving community which is sustainable economically, environmentally, and socially." That last one refers to social justice. I can think of, not that it's limited to this, to me, this is a perfect example of the Borough Council and this community's commitment to socially responsible and social justice-related causes and issues. And I think that what Councilmember Wolkowitz has done with this is extraordinary, and I would like to commend the council for its support of this particular effort. I, you know, I wish that we were able to do more of this. We certainly thank the Department of Community Affairs for its very generous financial support to make this possible, but I really think this is absolutely in the spirit of what Highland Park is all about. So, this is one of those times when I am pleased to say, I, not that I'm not always proud to be mayor, I am especially proud to be mayor when we do things like this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. All right, so we have Resolutions Number 13 through 37 inclusive, Items 14, 14, 49 through 114, 73. The following are resolutions, oh, I'm sorry, Resolution to Approve Facade and Oning Improvement Contract. The following are resolutions to approve professional services agreements for Borough Attorney Edwin Schmier, Tax Appeal Attorney Martin Allen, Labor Attorney Art Thibault, Bond Counsel Lawrence Goldman and Spitzer, Borough Auditor Andrew Hodjelik. Okay, Resolution Authorizing Execution Agreement for Risk Management Services, to approve professional services agreements for Borough Engineer David Samuel, and for Borough Planner Alan Chectel, to certify funds for the 2014 water main and/or sanitary sewer repairs, to certify funds for the 2014 annual tree maintenance contract, authorizing a tax credit for Block 46, Lot 32, to cancel unexpended water and sewer utility capital improvement appropriation balances, to approve change orders for the Public Safety Building, to appoint an alternate public defender, to refund tax overpayment on a tax appeal for Block 71, Lot 12, to approve the purchase of a generator for the firehouse, approve bids for generator for the senior center, to approve the purchase of kiosks, to approve taxi owner licenses for 2014, taxi owner license 2014, and taxi operator license 2014, to approve the bills list, lease of land to Highland Park First Aid Squad, for replacement water main on Montgomery Street, to approve payment to Public Safety Building architect. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution to Approve Budget Transfers. I need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Minkoff appoints the following to Service Professionals for 2014, Special Counsel Jeffrey Serenian- Counsel Jeffrey Serenian, and Special Planner Phil Caton. Okay, so there's no confirmation needed?
No, you can make those appointments.
I can just make them? Well, consider them made. Okay, do we have any open items? All right, is there any public discussion? Seeing that there's none, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you, good night, and be safe, everybody.